If I could, I'd call our meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here this evening. The first item on our agenda is to call our meeting to order and establish a quorum. All of our board team's here, so I appreciate everyone being here and us being able to start on time. The next item on our agenda is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Jay Johnston. He's the Johnson, the pastor at Cowboy Church in San Angelo, and he's going to lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray. Father God, we just come to you, Lord, and we do thank you for this day. And we just come together to acknowledge that you are God, and you're the strong one who sees and hears, Lord. And we thank you for your mercy and your grace, Lord. Father, we just pray as we come together, pray for these leaders, Lord, as they come to make decisions, Lord, for this community, for the kids, Lord, for parents, and for faculty, and all that's involved, Lord. So God, I just pray, God, we know that you have a plan, but you ask us to do the legwork. So I just pray, Father, for wisdom, Lord. I pray for knowledge. I pray for discernment. I pray for awareness, Lord, that in decision-making process, that we would just not choose what is good, but what is excellence, Lord. So we put our faith and trust in you in all of these things. And we thank you for your promise, where you never leave us, you never forget about us, and every perfect promise of our salvation in Jesus, for it's in his name we pray. Amen. Amen.
Thanks, Pastor. We appreciate that. Okay, our next items are pledges, and I'm going to welcome our students from San Jacinto Elementary as they come forward. So we have Kason Bowie, Sierra Hudson, Sophia Rudolph, Gigi Roman, and Lulu Alfaro. So let's stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Good job. Okay, and if I told all these beautiful young ladies that if their parents wanted to come up and take a picture, they could come up and get a little closer? So y'all come on up and y'all pose appropriately, okay? Great job, young ladies. I always remind them that they have to start, and they have to be loud so that I can hear. You know, so they did both those excellently. So we appreciate them being here this evening. I'll go ahead and read our script before we go any further. I appreciate everyone being here. Good evening and welcome. As the president of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular school board meeting. I also welcome those of you who might be watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our evening, at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on each, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. Also, we'll make certain to give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments to our board team on any agenda item should be, do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with Texas state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of San Angelo Independent School District's permanent legal record. In order that the tape might adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking, and I also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones at this particular time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting and to thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our school district. Our next item is item four, recognitions, and I believe Mr. Jackson's going to help us with that. Thanks, Derek.
Good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. Tonight, I have the privilege of presenting this very special recognition. We're going to recognize our desk board. The people on the desk board are very special to us here, and they mean a lot to us here at San Angelo ISD. Back in 2004, their president and founder, Eric Wilson, had an idea, knowing there was a need in our district for students who did not have school supplies. Mr. Wilson decided that he would form a board of concerned citizens, and they would set about to raise funds for students of SA ISD who were in need of those supplies. This year, our desk board gave students of San Angelo ISD through its campuses school supply money in the amount of $55,058.65. For those who may not know, DESK stands for Donate Educational Supplies to Kids. The organization since its inception has raised and given to campuses in our district more than $650,000 for the purpose of meeting the needs of those in the district who are unable to purchase their own school supplies. Each campus in the district each year receives a percentage of the total amount of money raised based on the number of students who receive assistance through our free and reduced meal program. At the annual DESK presentation each August, campus administrators are given their funds so that supplies may be purchased before the school year begins. This evening, we're honored to have several members of the desk board with us. So Dr. Detloff, would you please come forward and help me recognize the desk board members who are here in attendance this evening? And desk board members, when we call your name, please come forward, and Dr. Detloff will present your certificate, and we would like for you to stay as well for a group photo, and then our board members and administrators would like to greet you and say thank you. So with that said, we will begin with Eric Wilson. Do a group photo after, so we'll get them all. So next up, Vicky Lozo. Thank you, sir. Jacklen Ochoa, not in attendance, okay. I didn't hear he was here, sorry about that. John Flint, I didn't see John around there. Think we can get that in the hands. Andy Mayer, not here. Elizabeth Jost. We have a couple that did not attend, I apologize. Kathy Self. David Wagner, is he here? Well, I know Cheryl's here. Cheryl Book. Let me get to the ones I know are here. All right, it looks like that's going to be our group for the photo. You want to keep, let's go around the horn and shake hands here real quick. That's right, you're not done just yet. Thank you, sir. Yes, that's it. We didn't have as many in attendance. Mr. Lehman, that concludes our recognitions.
Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate that group so much. It seems like every year, they raise more and more money for our students, so thank y'all. We appreciate y'all's efforts, and pretty amazing, 650, over $650,000. So thank y'all. Our next item, and I think we do have someone wishing to make comments to our board team, is for anyone wishing to make comments on topics not on our agenda this evening. I have Ms. Jennifer Wallace wishing to do so. So when you get up, Jennifer, if you'd make sure you use that mic over there and announce who you are, and we are very appreciative of you taking time to be here this evening, so thank you.
Thank you all for allowing me to have a few minutes of your time. I am a mother of three wonderful children. My son is a Central grad from 2010, and went on to ASU and is a graduate from Angelo State as well. I have a junior at Central who is a third-year varsity cheerleader and also a third-year varsity gymnast. And then I have my sweet Lauren, who is a special education student in the ninth grade at Lincoln Middle School. And I am here tonight on Lauren's behalf. My other two children are who they are today because of the things they have been involved in in school throughout their lives. And I'm here tonight to encourage and help promote special education, to develop programs so that our children have other opportunities to grow. I didn't prepare anything to say tonight because this is definitely from my heart, and I'm not just speaking on Lauren's behalf. This is for the other students whose parents are not here tonight or can't come, but also may not have the faith that I have in our school system. I want to see us grow, and I want to see us improve, and I want to see us do better. I know that the Special Education Department grew tremendously this year, and what a better opportunity for us now to take that and make this into something great, and want people to come to San Angelo to be a part of something that's good. I believe in our school, and I believe in all of y'all. And so when Stephanie or Denise Boiles is helping to push, it's because of me. It's because I'm pushing them, because I want to see change, and I want to see things happen for the better for our students in the special education program. So thank y'all all for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Wallace. We appreciate you being here and speaking on behalf of so many of our students, so thank you. Okay, let's move forward to our minutes, the approval of our minutes. And I think you know this already, but we can't specifically address anything that you discussed this evening because it's not on our agenda, but certainly as we move forward, I know we'll keep your comments in mind, and our team, our administrative team will certainly accept the challenge, you know, so thank you. Our next item is approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes of our August meetings?
Move to approve.
So we have a motion from Mr. Hernandez and a second from Mr. Parker to approve the minutes of our August 13th special finance and pre-agenda workshop meeting, our August 20th, 2018 regular board meeting, and our August 27th, 2018 special meeting. Are there any comments concerning our minutes, or any additions or corrections that you'd like to make to our minutes? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passed. And our next item is for reports. I checked with Ms. Harmon, I think we're okay on Goodfella. Our next item is B on our reports, update on academic progress, and I think Ms., Dr. Ritter's going to help us with that.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. So I'm going to be combining those two items on the agenda today. The first thing you have there, this larger page, is our strategic plan, the one-pager of our strategic plan that our district, we have just finished completing. We started this process in October of 2017 and proceeded through September 2018. Final approval, that will be October 2018. So I'm giving this to you now, so that many of you sat on some committees and provided some input and feedback for us through this process that involved over 200 community, parent, and district representatives on all of these different areas and the categories of teaching for learning, innovation, human capital, funding and finance, facilities, communications, and community involvement. So in these areas, we have the objectives, strategies, action plans, and then the years, the years of planning there for implementation in these areas. So I just encourage you to review this. You'll have an electronic copy also provided to you, and we will be, I will be soliciting some input from you also, and if you have questions, you're welcome to contact me. We'll be presenting this in final form next month in our October board meeting. So I want to highlight the two areas of teaching for learning and innovation. As we do academic reports, it's important for us to connect everything we do with our strategic plan that we are, that we have developed, and with the objectives of all students being actively engaged and invested in their learning to grow academically and become future-ready graduates under teaching for learning. I wanted to, and also under innovation, inspiring students to be invested in their learning. I wanted to highlight on the academic update here that you have in front of you also, and I'm just, there's so much that I wanted to share with you today, that I'm just going to go through these items, and I gave you the hard copy so that you have that to follow along with me. Y'all have that one, this white pager. First of all, I think we just, I wanted to brag on our district a little bit, and it's not on this page, but in line with our teaching for learning, wanted to highlight that even just today, we received notification from the Texas Association of School Administrators that we have been selected as the leading district in the state in utilizing our curriculum audit and our processes to drive district improvement in teaching for learning. I will be representing our district and presenting this with TASA at the upcoming TASA-Tasby School Board Conference, and they're wanting us to focus on how we've utilized our curriculum audit to proceed with curriculum writing that we started three years ago, and the implementation process, the revision as a continuous improvement process. With the thing that stands out for our district is how we're utilizing also our future-ready learner profile and really embedding that into everything that we do. And so we'll be presenting, I will be presenting that with TASA this next, in two weeks, I guess, when we go for the TASA-Tasby School Board Conference. We're also currently finalizing our parent-community platform. This will be ready and for access for our parent community by December of 2018. Again, a component of our curriculum writing process that's very important to us so that we know that we have transparency in what we're doing in curriculum, that we're also very aligned with our state standards and our high-priority learning standards for the district, in line with our future-ready learner profile. So that's just a little area of pride for us as a district, and we're looking forward to that and informing you more on all of that. With our academic update tonight, what I wanted to highlight here, we've just had a lot of processes happening with the beginning of the school year. We just completed a continuous improvement data dig. We are going to complete this with all of our campuses. We did about half of our campuses last week at the Region 15 Education Service Center led by David Bedford, who is, he works with the school improvement department there. And really, this was in order for us to take campus leadership teams through a deep dive into their data on their campus from their previous year's STAR data. The campus leadership teams, which include administrators ICs and several lead teachers from each campus, they were scheduled, we were focusing on effective leadership through a growth mindset lens, and closely examined our campus data to discover areas of strength and areas of focus for targeted strategies and actions, completed a root cause analysis to understand specific needs of student groups, as well as to determine effective responses for improvement efforts. And every campus team through this process developed a plan of action to clearly articulate the next steps in providing support and focus for each targeted area. As a response to this, our administrative team of Dr. Detloff, Shelley Holahan, Matt Kimball, myself, and the executive director for each campus, we've started the rounds of our academic-focused leadership meetings, starting with those campuses that we just finished our data digs on. We've met with the campus administration held at each of those campuses, and I just included the questions that we've gone over with them, more of a conversation around what were the aha's through that process. Each campus principal reflected on their data dig and responded to these questions that I've provided you here, just really what were the main discoveries, the highlights, the top three focus areas that your team identified, the responses you determined, including activities and strategies for these focus areas, and how will the principal be leading the monitoring and implementation of strategies on the campus. So we've had some excellent conversations with our campus administrators, and what we've come away with from that is a feeling of excitement. They feel very supported by the district in the areas of math and reading with our literacy initiative as well. And so it's really nice to be able to go in and help support them and to hear from them how they're planning on utilizing that support, and they're very appreciative of your support as well. On the back of this page, I just gave some specifics to our literacy initiative. We are, right now, we're working with scholastics, we have consultants who've been on the elementary, middle school campuses last week and this week to meet with and provide job-embedded coaching for every elementary, middle school reading teacher in the district. Our teachers are being provided feedback regarding implementation of best practices and guided reading and balanced literacy, and our curriculum team is working alongside them to be able to carry this out in the coaching with fidelity throughout the school year. We also have leveled bookroom materials and digital planning tools that our teachers are being trained in so that they can more effectively plan lessons designed around the customized needs of our students and their reading levels. Our new mercy initiative, which is math, we have observers right now on campuses this week to observe math instruction in our classrooms, K through 12, and we have coaches developing a customized plan of action for every campus and moving forward with instructional best practice. These coaches will meet with teachers throughout the school year to provide job-embedded coaching to increase the use of research-proven practices. Again, we feel that in focusing in these areas this year with our new curriculum, with our future-ready learner profile, that we're really headed in a great direction. Our teachers feel very supported, and our principals are very excited about this support. And lastly here, we're going to highlight the measure of academic progress assessment, our MAP testing that we are going to be implementing this year. We've talked about it some with you. These are growth tests. It's a measure to help us understand what students know and what they are ready, it informs us as to what they are ready to learn next. By adjusting to their responses, the MAP tests create a personal assessment experience that accurately measures performance. Timely, easy-to-use reports help teachers teach, students learn, and administrators lead. They are aligned to state standards, they provide proficiency projection and probability for passing the STAR, and it allows teachers to individualize differentiation for student needs. So through this, we will have our students in grades, second grade through eighth grade for this year, in reading and math and in science and some of those grade levels, so that we can really assess where our students are. So we're looking forward to this data, and it will help us to see the growth that our students are experiencing, aligned with our curriculum and state standards, and we look forward to reporting more on this to you in the future. So I know that's a lot of information, but we've been doing a lot since school started. So are there any questions?
Thanks, Dr. Ritter. Any questions, Dr. Kingman?
I would just say, I'm glad we're actually using this data to actually, and going through the implementation. It's a great job for the whole administrative team to be going through and actually using this data with the new curriculum and all the tools we have to actually implement things that are hopefully going to make a lot of improvement for our kids, so great job.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking the Region 15 Service Center to get involved with this as well.
Absolutely. They've done a fabulous job. We are partnering with them, and we have another round of campuses that we will be going through October the 4th to do the same process, and then we'll continue with our academic-focused meetings that we'll be having with those administrators.
Yes, Dr. Detloff? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just want, you said something that wasn't on our paperwork. We were chosen what?
I know, this is, this is new information. I knew we were going to be called on, but I didn't know that we actually are the district that was selected to participate, to present this with TASA as the district that they've identified to really, that we've gone through. We've gone through this entire process, that we have a true five-year plan with a strategic plan in place, that we're following through with that with fidelity, with support. And they're just very impressed by that, and that we have our future-ready learner profile, that we continually embed into the work that we're doing. So it has to do with, we had our curriculum audit years ago, a few years ago, and we have made sure we have addressed those areas. We have rewritten the curriculum, we have revised it, implemented, and we are moving forward with everything that we have, we have found that needed to be, need to be adjusted and addressed. And so now we have that aligned curriculum across our district. We actually today had the round, this is the last round of curriculum writing for the group of, this is fine art, all the fine arts groups, electives, including languages other than, than English. So our Spanish was here as well today, and any outline groups that we've had, like we, some of our higher-level science, higher-level math, higher-level social studies classes that were here as well today. And they were very excited to be included in this process.
But, and then secondly, you said at the school board convention that we're all going to, we've been to several of those, that you will be in one of the breakout sessions?
Yes.
In one of the sessions that, when we go, the persons watching this don't understand, but when we go to the school board convention, there are different programs that we can choose from, maybe every hour, hour and a half, to get our continuing hours of training, and we can choose those programs, and there is going to be one of those programs that's going to be presented by you on what you just talked about?
Yes. Yes, they will.
So that's a, to me, that's a pretty big deal, because I don't remember my 14 years being on the board that we actually, San Angelo Independent School District has presented one of the programs. So if that's what we're doing, give yourself a pat on the back and the group that you've been working on, because that's something to really be proud of.
Thank you. We also, it's not on here, but we're also selected to present with our, working with community-based accountability system. We're in the kind of groundwork of that work with the Texas Performance, well, the Texas Public Accountability Consortium that our district is participating in through TASA as well. And our district's done quite a work, quite a bit of work. Farah Gomez, Dean Munn, Jason Skelton, and Michael Columbach attend those sessions with me when we go, and we're actually working to help build community-based accountability in the state of Texas, and we'll, I'll be there presenting on that as well.
Two programs?
Yes, sir.
Pat yourself on the back twice, then. That's a big deal.
And you have to come to our sessions. One of them's at 7:30 in the morning, so.
That's perfect. Max gets up early, so that's perfect, don't worry. Any other, Dr. Detloff?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. First, Dr. Ritter, I just want to highlight the work of our entire curriculum instruction staff and department. We have many pockets of academic excellence in this district. We also have some spots that we need to target for assistance, so I appreciate you using the curriculum audit as the foundation to that. More so, I also want to highlight that our Board of Trustees has reallocated the resources to match the need. So a few weeks ago, we have provided the resources and the funding to match the academic need. So before, we were really good at targeting a specific campus that struggled academically and moving them out of that struggle. However, the more we worked to be proactive, we are now utilizing those same support mechanisms across the entire district. So we are touching all of our elementary schools to catch them before they struggle academically. So I want to highlight the board's effort of, the allocation of resources to match the need, because we are about academic performance, and again, we have pockets of excellence, and we are striving to close those achievement gaps. So thank you and your staff for all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff. Any other comments or questions from our board team? Thanks, Dr. Ritter. We appreciate that. And I think she combined reports B and C, so now we have our next report's D, which is on Human Resource and Professional Development update, and Mr. Kimball's going to do that for us. Matt, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Dr. Detloff, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. I've analyzed hours and hours and hours of board meeting video over Channel 4, and one of the things I realized, if we strategically placed the learner profile over my right shoulder, Jack the cameraman can catch it on TV. So we're hoping that our audience that's not here at least gets to see a glimpse of our learner profile on TV. our learner profile on TV, so I'm counting on you, Jack. As Dr. Ritter mentioned, we've got the strategic plan that she talked to you about. In 3.1, it talks about design innovative and flexible training processes. So today, tonight, I just wanted to highlight some of the amazing professional learning that occurred in our district this past summer, and that is also continuing through the school year. So this is all the things that our teachers participated in that were district-created. They also attended things on their own, college courses and those kinds of things, but these are district-designed items. We started in June with our partnership with TASSA and the Schlecty Center. We have the Schlecty Design Camp. We've had groups go to Design Camp before, but we actually brought them here, and we had about 60 to 75 teachers that participated in two days of work in designing engaging activities, engaging work for students. So instead of focusing on teacher-designed lesson plans, it was really designing that work around their who, around their students. And so Vicky Phelps and Nancy Rendoni Downey were here. They focused on design qualities, and teachers were introduced to that, and they walked away with a redesigned unit of study for their students. And we had, like I said, about 70 teachers that were participating in that. Then, June 12th through 14th, we had Learning Palooza. We've had that for many years, and we've expanded it over time. This is offered by many of our own outstanding teachers in the school district. They are identified, sometimes we have to convince them to come present, but they all do a great job. They come and do some training on presenting, and then they present over those three days. We had 58 sessions with more than 65 of our current school district teachers that presented on everything from guided reading, project-based learning, written curriculum updates that were done last year, Daily Five, Math Workshop. We had over 2,300 hours of professional learning time accrued by the teachers that participated in that. Then, in the latter part of June, 19th to 20th, we had Engage Technology Conference. There were 98 sessions over those two days. We had not only our own school district presenters, teachers that are doing amazing things in the classroom, but we also had presenters from across the nation. We even had a 10-year-old that does an amazing job. I think I've mentioned her before at the Live Bits. We heard her with Allen November at a conference, and she is amazing, talking to kids about what they can do with their learning and communicating that online. So we had some outstanding sessions, very well-received, everything from student choice with technology, Makerspace areas, coding for kids, digital stations, and we had over 250 of our own employees that attended, and 3,000 hours of credit that were received. So that's pretty amazing, a lot of learning. Sometimes I think our public doesn't realize that teachers are working all summer long too, so it's important. Something that we added new this year, we added a STEM camp for students. This started with it as an idea to have a kids' conference along with our technology conference, and it turned into a STEM camp. Roxanne Fintriss, Michelle Beers, Cass Jennings were three teachers that worked with Laura Howard and Jennifer Feck to plan and design that day. I think Ms. Mizelle Flint got her kids in that, and I think they enjoyed that. We had 353 students applied, and we had over 100 elementary students that were accepted, and 74 middle school students that were accepted. We're looking to expand it so we can accept more next year. We had 11 teachers. This was all sponsored by the San Angelo Schools Foundation, 100%, and that made it free for students. So they came, they got a day of learning around STEM, they had free t-shirts, they got pizza for lunch, can't beat pizza, had some snacks in there as well, and they left with an item to take home and work on their own. And again, that was sponsored by the Schools Foundation.
Matt, before we go any further, don't use as many acronyms, so let everybody know what STEM means, you know?
STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. My apologies.
Thank you.
That was just a brief video. The website that's located, your packet will take you to a much longer video that highlights a variety of activities, everything from coding to rocketry. They even did a solar oven activity, so a lot of different activities that involved science, technology, engineering, and math at the camp. On July 27th, we had Administrator's Retreat. Again, Nancy Rendoni and Vicky Phelps came back and worked with our principals around design qualities, and the neat thing about this day was not only did they get to focus on the design qualities that we look for as we design work for our students, but they got to put it into practice as they designed professional learning on August 16th. They designed for that day for their staff. So they put in those design qualities into practice as they designed around the district initiatives and key focuses of our district when they came back to school with their teachers. July 30th, we had Coaching Greatness. Brad McCoy and Scott Candela were here from the Flipping Group. This is a complimentary program that we did with 97 of our athletic coaches in the school district. It complements Capturing Kids' Hearts, and really is a powerful tool for our coaches to get involved and support the work that we've done with that arena. That was over two days, and the coaches, many of them said that was one of the best trainings they had attended, and so it was a great success. Following that, we had on August 1st and 2nd, Capturing Kids' Hearts Leadership Blueprint. Our leadership team and principals went through this last year, and so this year, we were able to have our instructional coaches and our assistant principals attend as well. So 48 attended those sessions focused on quality leadership through purposeful actions and reflective consideration of personal growth. And again, that aligns with Capturing Kids' Hearts and the work that we're doing with that in our classrooms. August 9th, 10th, and 13th, we had our New Teacher Academy. Over 150, I think it was actually approaching 200 new teachers participated in sessions focused on our key initiatives, our high priority standards, our successful teaching strategies such as Marzano's strategies, and much more focused to get them on board and get them ready to start the year, as well as TTEST, which stands for the Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support System. That's their evaluation system that we use for teachers. August 15th was our Teaching for Learning Day in the district. This was district-wide. We had math and science teachers participated in curriculum rollout. That was new curriculum that was written last year, so they participated in learning about that curriculum, getting into the documents, making sure they understood it so that they could begin planning with this year. Language arts, social studies, foreign language teachers spent time planning and giving feedback on their new curriculum, and those were offered by curriculum writers and administrators across the district, and focused on our Teaching for Learning Plan, the guaranteed and viable curriculum at the top, focused professional development on the side, professional learning community in the middle, and data. August 16th, as I mentioned earlier, principals designed this day using design qualities in mind, focused on our district initiatives, Capturing Kids' Hearts, the learner profile, design qualities, engaging students. And so these were conducted on the campuses but centered around those important district initiatives across the district. And then August 20th was also a district professional development day. Dr. Ritter mentioned the work that we're doing with Math Solutions and Scholastic, and this was an initial kickoff for some of that. We had elementary teachers focused on guided reading as well as on math, and we added that up through our middle schools as well. Our writing initiative has been going on for several years. Farah Gomez has been working with our teachers on that, and we pushed that up into our English I and English II teachers as well to make sure that we have our vertically-aligned processes for writing instruction. And we'll continue that work throughout this year. And so that was a very full summer of lots of professional learning, and lots that are going on this year, continuing with Math Solutions, Scholastic, writing training, Level Literacy Intervention Kit. So we've got a lot going on, and our teachers are finding a lot of value in it.
Any questions for Mr. Kimball? Yeah, go ahead.
First, I just wanted to say that for those who think that teachers have the summer off, this is proof otherwise. And if we could just go back to the STEM camp for one second, so my nine-year-old, or my eight-year-old and my 13-year-old both participated and had a fabulous time. They loved it. Still talk about the different activities they did, you know, two months later, and the only complaint that they had was that it was only one day long. So, but I wanted to just take this time to publicly thank the Schools Foundation for sponsoring that for us, because it was a wonderful program, and we look forward to participating again next year.
Thanks, Amy. Other comments or questions for, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Again, I just want to recognize Patty Griffin and Matt Kimball and the Human Resources and Professional Learning Department for what they do. It's a multi-layered approach to have student success, and so the executive directors in this room, Dr. Bright, our assistant superintendents, it takes everyone to generate student success, so I'm very appreciative of all the work our staff does. There is not a day that goes by that we don't spend two to three hours of that day focusing on student success and student academic performance. As you've heard this evening, it basically boils down to a couple of items. First, building relationships with kids, and also, as we know, extracurricular activities build relationships with kids, whether they're in band, choir, soccer, volleyball, or on the gridiron Friday nights, or the dance team. It's those extracurricular items that also build relationships with kids. The leadership profile, the Capturing Kids' Hearts, all that helps keep kids in school. And we know that when kids are building relationships, they're participating in school activities, they're safer, their GPA is higher, their attendance rate is higher, and their graduation rate is higher when they're involved in school. So we want to keep kids involved in school, and at the same time, that involvement leads to higher academic performance. So I just want to thank all the staff that we have that are working diligently for the success of kids every day. Also, Mr. Kimball, our learner profile, I think, sets kids up for success, you know, in the modern era, because I think if you look at any of the attributes of a learner, these attributes are the same attributes that organizations, the military, trade certifications are all looking for in kids as they hire them, as they move on and become successful citizens. And all those, there are only four, the four Cs of the learner profile. I was at a meeting the other day, and for some reason, I added a fifth, and I said civic capacity. So that's a good one, but maybe we can add that later. I'm not quite sure where that came from. But the learner profile is just a great, you know, it's kind of a lighthouse for us. It's the guiding light of student achievement. So I just want to thank everyone in our board again for putting the resources where the needs are.
Other questions or comments? Thanks, Matt. We appreciate that update, and certainly, as Amy mentioned, you know, our students, some of our students are busy in the summer, but certainly our teachers and administrators and others are more busy in the summer, so we appreciate their commitment to our students. Our next item is Report E. It's provided in our Friday Facts. This is from the eighth day of school. We're much further along than that, but on the eighth day of school, we had four more students than we did on the eighth day of school last year, so we're doing pretty well there. We appreciate the confidence that the community has in allowing us the opportunity to educate their children. So we'll move forward to our consent items. Do we have a motion to approve consent items A through F?
Move for approval of consent items A through E.
Through E, I'm sorry. So we have a motion for, yeah, thank you. Yeah, my eyesight's really bad tonight, so it looks like an F, but I thought D and then F, so A through F. So thanks, we have a motion for Mr. Dindal and a second for Mr. Gallegos, I believe. So our first item, we've listed those that have made contributions and donations. We appreciate their, those donations and their interest in our students. I especially like, wanted to mention several of the contributions made by the West Texas Energy Consortium. We appreciate their support of our district. Also, St. Luke's Methodist Church made a contribution on behalf of the district, and then the Santa Rita PTO, with the help of Caltech, Grigsby, Stribblings, and St. Angelo Gives, made a $20,000 contribution to assist us with a structure, a shade structure at Santa Rita, so we appreciate those contributions to our school district. And certainly, we thank the Lions charities as well. So that's item A. Item B is to consider extracurricular status for 4-H Organization and Adjunct Faculty Agreement at Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Service in Tom Green County. Item C is to consider Election of Services Contract. Item D is to consider Bid Number 18024, which is for wireless radio maintenance and repair. And item E is to consider repeal of all previously adopted policies and the adoption of local policies as prepared by our TASB Policy Review. So those are the items that we have on our consent agenda. As most people know in the room, and certainly we've previously mentioned this, but all those items were previously discussed at our pre-agenda board workshop. So does anybody have any questions or would like to remove any of the items A through E? If not, do we have any public comment concerning items A through E? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Item nine is to consider the firm to appeal the State Comptroller's Annual Property Value Study, and Dr. Bright's going to review that with us. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Good evening. We discussed at pre-agenda that normally this is just a routine item for us. We've done this property value appeal for many years, as long as I can remember. The group is called LimeBurger, and they come in and they'll appeal the property value study that the comptroller's going to do here pretty quickly. But the board felt like this was also an opportunity for us to kind of remind the public of how the Texas school funding system operates. And the first thing we would want to do is share that there is a big difference between the way property taxes operate on the city, county, and special taxing district level than they do on the school district level. We know good and well that, and this is not a rub on the city and county or any of those districts, it's just how it is, that those districts or those entities can leave their tax rate the same, and as long as values increase, which they generally do over time, they can generate more operational dollars. And then some will come back and wrongly claim that they didn't raise taxes, but we know good and well that they're, you know, the taxes are going up because of values. On the other side, school district property taxes are part of a funding system. It's a formula-driven system, and there's two pieces to it. One is property taxes, local property taxes, but the other piece of it is state funding, and it's a combination. Now, the amount of state funding or the amount of mix depends on how property wealthy you are. The less money you're able to generate locally, the more state dollars the state will put into your, what we, the analogy we use is a funding cup. You have your little funding cup, the first thing that goes in it is the local property taxes, and then the state fills your cup up with state dollars. Now, what happens on a systemic basis is that as property values increase, you put more local tax dollars in your cup, but your cup doesn't grow. All the state does is simply reduce the amount they put in your cup to fill it. And over time, this causes problems with the system, because as property values grow, the state puts less money in the system and pushes more of the burden to fund public schools on the backs of the local property taxpayers. And like I said, over time, it gets out of whack, and it could be upwards of 60% or more of the funding is coming from the local property taxpayers, and as the values keep climbing, more of that burden gets pushed on to our local taxpayers. Some people say, well, is the system broke? Because the question is, what is the state doing with all that extra money that they're no longer having to put into the system? Well, that's a great question for your legislators. What generally taxpayers. And like I said, over time, it gets out of whack, and it could be upwards of sixty percent or more of the funding is coming from the local property taxpayers. And as the values keep climbing, more of that burden gets pushed on to our local taxpayers. Some people say, well, is the system broke? Because the question is, what is the state doing with all that extra money that they're no longer having to put into the system? Well, that's a great question for your legislators. What generally tends to happen is they take the money, and they either fund something else around state government, or they may offer tax breaks to other groups than local property taxpayers, like businesses, like maybe through a business franchise tax reduction, those type of things. So is the system broke? The answer is no and yes. No, it's not broke because it is functioning exactly like it's supposed to. As values climb, state puts in less money, system stays whole. Is it broke? Yes, because without an infusion of other tax dollars, the burden for paying for public schools is going to continue to be pushed on to local taxpayers. And there is a fix. The legislature can fix this, but they must have the will. And I'm not even saying add new money to the system. Just leave the same money in the system. You must replace the local property taxes with some other form of state dollars. And right now, there's not a will to do that. It's much easier to just leave the system alone, let the local property taxes keep filling up those cups, and not have to pull taxes from other areas. So how does Limebarger fit into all of this? Well, since, since the amount of funding we receive is based on property values and the amount of property taxes we can generate, what they do is you have local values assigned by our local district. The state comes in, and they sort of grade the appraisal district. And if it's within a certain confidence level, they leave you alone. But if it's not, what they tend to do is they want to assign what's called state values to your funding element in the funding formula. My experience has been that it's generally the state values are always higher than the local values. And so remember what we talked about from the system standpoint. The higher your values are, the wealthier you look, and the less state dollars they give you. So what this firm does is they come in and they, they look at our values, and they appeal to the comptroller's office to have our values lowered. Now, it doesn't affect individual taxpayers. It's from a systemic standpoint and from a district standpoint. And the lower they can get those values, the more state aid our district will generate. If we didn't appeal it, we would just get what we get and move on. With them appealing it, they have been highly successful, I think, just about every year. They've had our property values reduced. You've seen the data in the packet. They generate more state dollars for our school district, dollars we would not have received if they haven't stepped up and appealed the values for us. So our recommendation is to once again hire them. They will come in after the value study is done. They'll make the appeal. If they do what they've done every year in the past, they'll get our values reduced in our formulas, and our district will earn as much state aid as we possibly can. Well, Mr. Lehman, go from there.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. That's a really simple explanation of a pretty difficult system, and I appreciate you doing that. But maybe one thing you didn't mention is how we pay Limebarger, so you might want to cover that as well.
Sure. Their fee is contingent on additional state aid, and they receive ten percent of any gain we make. Over time, they've gained a lot of money. In fact, I think I noticed that over the last fifteen years or so, they had our values reduced by over a billion. Our values would be a billion higher today if they had not come in and appealed. So they receive ten percent of any gain we receive. Last year, we received three hundred thirty-three thousand extra dollars, and we paid Limebarger thirty-three thousand of those dollars.
So we don't pay them unless there's, unless there's an appeal.
Absolutely.
And when there's an appeal, and if they win the appeal, then we get, they get ten percent of that, of that win. Okay? So that's a pretty good return on our investment, and certainly something that we wouldn't, there is no cost to the district, and it, and I don't remember, I've been on the board for seventeen, eighteen years now, and I don't remember the state values ever being above local values either. So it's a system set up where the state drives values higher, and then we have to convince the state that our local appraisal district is more effective in understanding what true value is, and then we, the protest comes into, in that area, and then they protest the values that the state has provided versus what our local, our local appraisal district has.
And unfortunately, you just triggered my soapbox. That, you know, the sad part of it is that our leadership continues to hammer schools because of rising property taxes. And they're right. People are possibly getting taxed out of their homes because of this overreliance on property taxes. And they have solutions like tax caps and, or, you know, hold the appraisals down. Those aren't going to work. And the thing that frustrates us from a school district level is while they complain about the rising values, they send the property tax division out to each appraisal district to make them raise their values. So, you know, it's a false narrative that they're presenting there, and it's, school people recognize that, and we fight every year to take that money, put it back in the system, compress tax rates, give us tax relief, allow us to compress tax rates, put more optional, put more homestead exemption money in there, do something with that money rather than siphon it off to their pet projects. So, yeah, it's very frustrating. It's very tough on our local property taxes, but the solution is with the legislature. If we can put enough pressure on them, maybe they'll start listening. All right, sorry about that.
And for those of you who would like to put pressure on them, it is a legislative year, so our legislature does meet beginning in January for a hundred and forty days unless there's a special session. So if you'd like to do that, now would be a great time for you to do that. So anybody have any questions or comments concerning, thanks again, Dr. Bright. That's a great presentation and simple enough where I can understand it, so it's got to be relatively simple. So thank you.
Just one point, that when you're talking about our legislature, our legislature's Drew Darby, he understands this. He's the one that's helped educate us on this. He just needs more help in Austin to get this done. So I don't want this to sound like a criticism of Drew, because I know he fully recognizes what's going on. With that, with that said, I would like to make a motion that we approve the administration's recommendation for the proposal from Limebarger, Gogan Blair, and Sampson for representation of San Angelo Independent School District for an appeal of the comptroller's two thousand and eighteen property value study.
Second?
Thanks. We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve the state, the firm to appeal the annual property value study. Any other questions or comments? I would second Matt's comments. Drew was, Representative Darby was selected as a champion of public education, and we presented an award to him last year. So certainly, Drew is a huge fan of public school systems. So the problem exists beyond Representative Darby, but there's at least some folks who think Representative Darby could potentially be the next speaker. And if so, he'll have significant more influence as we move forward. So any other comments or questions concerning our motion, any public comment? Yes, ma'am. Go to, if you'd go to the mic and let us know who you are. We appreciate your comments.
It's excellent report, but my question would be, if it's not costing anyone, anyone, anything, how are they paying this company?
Well, we, we pay them based on the awards. So in Jeff's example...
Right, but who's paying them?
They're taking their fee. Their fee is three hun, so they save three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for the district in the last, last time they protested those numbers. So ten percent of that was thirty-three thousand. So of the three thirty-three that we should have got, we only got three thirty-three, three hundred and thirty-three thousand minus the thirty-three.
I, it just...
We actually cut the check from the district.
That's right.
Somebody has to pay them. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Correct. We pay them based on how well they do in protesting, in making our appeal for us, on our behalf. Thank you. Item ten is consider SEISDs. Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks. Yes. Yes, another question? Yes, go forward. And if you would tell us who you are, I'd appreciate it.
Yes. My name is Alexandra Sykes, and I have a seven-year-old, completely blind child at Reagan with terminal illness. So to say I have looked at our budget, to say I have analyzed our budget is an understatement. I stay up until four AM analyzing it. I want to know where these funds go. If we're not expecting to have to pay that, obviously, we have to have the idea that just in case their investigation does not give us, or their, what is it called? Their thorough, yes, yes, their appeal doesn't go through, then that three hundred and thirty-three thousand that we're going to have to fund the funds to pay for these property taxes, where do the funds go when we get that money back?
Jeff, you want to handle that? Yeah.
Okay, we base our revenue estimates on an anticipated property value. And during the year, here's other pieces. This is where it starts getting complicated. Your, your funding is based on prior year values, so we, we estimate, this will actually work for nineteen twenty revenue, this, this, this appeal. And so we base our estimates on last year's property values, which we know. And so we know the amount of state revenue we're going to, should receive. We already know that number, and it's built into the budget. It's not like all of a sudden they write us an extra check for three hundred thousand that we didn't know was coming. It's already built into the general budget.
And to the projected revenue for this school year, or this school year coming?
Yes.
So where, and I know that this is taking up time, but where is the funds from the previous year allocated through the revenue area? Because I have the budget paperwork over there. Can you just kind of throw me an area to look?
Yeah, let me come over there, and I'll show you exactly where it is.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, thanks, Becky, for reminding me. We have, we need a vote. Anyone, all in favor of a motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposing, indicate by saying no. Our motion, thank you. And now, item ten is to consider San Angelo ISD's Head Start, Early Head Start Program Implementation Plan, and Ms. Taunton's here to help us with that.
Good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. I have before you the changes to the revised implementation plan, which have been revised to meet the new performance standards that have come out. They've been revised in sections. I gave you a handout that was sent to you that shows you all of the components of the implementation plan. Some of them you've already approved, starting last March. Before you today are six, and they all fall under thirteen oh two, which is program operations. You have Subpart C, which is education and child development program services. Subpart D is health and program services. Subpart E is family and community engagement program services. Subpart F, additional services for children with disabilities. Subpart G, transition services and, transition services, and Subpart H, services for enrolled pregnant women. And all of these include the statutory requirements of the Head Start Act by describing all of the program performance standards that are required to operate Head Start and Early Head Start programs. This section, thirteen oh two, covers the full range of operations from enrolling eligible children to providing program services for the children and their families.
Thank you, Ms. Taunton. Any questions or comments for Rachel before she, do we have a motion to approve?
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the administration's recommendation for Head Start Parts thirteen oh two, Subpart C and H. Was that it?
C through H.
C through H. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Gerard. We have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Parker to approve our Head Start and Early Head Start Implementation, Implementation Plan in Section thirteen oh two, which includes Subpart C, which is education and child development. Subpart D is health program services. Subpart E is family and community engagement program services. Subpart F is additional services for children with disabilities. Subpart G is transition services, and Subpart H is services to enrolled pregnant women. Are there any other board comments or questions concerning our motion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposing, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. That covers our agenda for this evening. There's some announcements. Item A on our announcements is our upcoming convention that we found out that we're going to be presenters at. So hopefully, someone will take the time to attend Dr. Ritter's presentation. That's September twenty-eighth through the thirtieth in Austin. And then our finance and pre-agenda board workshop is scheduled for October ninth, and our regular board meeting is scheduled for October fifteenth. And I don't know if we need to go into closed session. Is there any reason for us, okay, we don't have any reason to go into closed session? Is there any, any item or topic that any of our board team would like for us to address at a future meeting? Dr. Detloff?
I just needed one maybe point of clarification from Becky. Becky, what time does the bus leave for TASB? So what time do we need to be here again?
One o'clock on Thursday, September twenty-seventh.
One o'clock on Thursday, the twenty-seventh. Okay, thank you.
And Jana wins your presentation? Dr. Ritter wins your presentation?
I win your presentation.
Seven thirty on the, on Fri, on Friday?
Eight forty-five on Friday.
Okay.
At 11:00.
Hey.
Eight forty-five.
Okay.
Seven thirty.
On Saturday?
On Saturday.
Okay.
And then I'll be helping with another one with John Tanner, but I don't know what time that is that I can do it.
Okay, please do so. So you'll have members of our board team in there to support you. And I don't think we have any further business, so here, no objection, we'll stand adjourned.